Okay. Good evening and welcome to the North Bend City Council meeting for Tuesday, March twenty sixth at seven P M here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order, please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Okay, all right. Good evening and welcome. Welcome to everybody who is here in the council chambers. Welcome to those who are watching online and for those who are watching at a later date. After calling the meeting to order, I'm going to go ahead and have councillor Jones start with the rope call.
Yeah. Councillor Hamilton. Councillor Garboden. Mayor Engleby.
Here.
Councillor Gollum.
Here.
Councillor Schultz.
President.
Councillor Norton.
President.
We did something right tonight, so that's, that's good. Okay. All right. Is there number three on the agenda is the consent calendar? Is there a motion from the council?
I moved to accept the consent calendar as written.
All right. I had a first from councillor Jones and a second from councillor Hamilton. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number four tonight is public comment. I believe we have one person signed up for public comment this evening. And Mr. Ken, if you want to go ahead and come forward, I do like to always announce that we appreciate everybody participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak. Our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Law, this isn't a time for us to have dialogue with you, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city recorder or finance director this evening are taking notes of any action as needed. So hello and welcome to spring in the council chambers.
Yeah. Good evening, y'all. First, I want to say thank you to everybody here and also want to thank the hospitals, the nurses, the doctors, police department and the fire department. And the other comment, I remember I told you last, last time I saw you about a program on PBS comes on every Thursday at five thirty. It's called All Across Oregon. And it, he did a couple of, about three weeks ago, he did a story in North Bend, Coos Bay and Charleston. He visited the Pancake Mill, Scoops, Vinnies, Yaya's, and he also went fishing out in the Bay Kay Charters. So it's a very interesting program and great advertising for Goose Bay and all the places that he visits. And that's it.
I love that. Thank you for that reminder. Have a wonderful springtime. Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider declaration of two, four, one, nine and two, four, five, one Broadway Avenue Dangerous Structures. I have our city finance director and city recorder that will help us walk through this public hearing. I also see our public works director here if needed. So I'm going to go ahead and begin that this is the time set for a public hearing to consider declaring two, four, one, nine and two, four, five, one Broadway Avenue is dangerous structures. At this time, I'll open the hearing. I'm going to ask each of the councillors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts that need to be reported? Okay, seeing and hearing none, I'll ask the staff to please present their reports.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, about a year and a half ago, twelve structures within the city of North Bend were identified as potentially dangerous structures. And although action could have been taken in an earlier time, we wait till we budgeted enough money if we had to address them, the city could abate them. On February fourteenth this year, specifically a certified letter was sent to the owners of twenty four nineteen and twenty four fifty one Broadway. They're the same owners. In that letter that was requested, they obtained a permit by March twelfth and/or complete repairs by June first of this year. We have not received a permit at this time. And what the public hearing deals with is part of a process. We take steps to abate these structures that we consider dangerous. First, it starts with staff's report. Staff sends a letter out which doesn't have the full teeth of city councils recognizing this structure as a dangerous structure. As we progress, we go then to a public hearing to give the owners of the property the right and the opportunity to present to you their concerns or their plans. And you have the right to review those following the public hearing and we will step to a actual declarations should you choose that you feel the property is a dangerous structure and is listed under ordinances.
Okay, so I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to the members of the council and staff. There is a three limit, three, there is a three minute time limit per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of declaring the properties located at two, four, one, nine Broadway Avenue and two, four, five, seven Broadway Avenue as dangerous structures? Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, I'm hearing and seeing none, then I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter? Okay, if there's no further discussion, I'll close the public hearing at this time and I will entertain a motion to, a motion from the council. And there is a proposed motion.
So.
Let's see, I move to approve resolution number three, three, four, five, declaring the properties located at twenty four nineteen and twenty four five one Broadway Ave as dangerous structures and authorize staff to move forward with the abatement.
Okay, I heard a first from councillor Jones, a second from councillor Garboden. Is there any discussion? All in favor then of the, and I want to, I have, I've got Lori Cooper online right now just to make sure that we are all in order of the things that we're supposed to do. But we had a first and we had a second. We had discussions. So then I would then ask if we're all in favor of approving resolution three, three, four, five, declaring the property located at two, four, one, nine Broadway Avenue and two, four, five, one Broadway Avenue as dangerous structures and authorize staff to move forward with the abatement. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Was there anything else that needs to do with that resolution? Okay, then the resolution passes. That would be for two, four, one, nine and two, four, five, one. Now I have a public hearing related to potential dangerous structures located at thirty eighty five Sherman Avenue. And this is for resolution three, three, four, six. And at this time, this is the time for the public hearing related to those dangerous structures. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and I'm also going to ask the councillors, are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte conversations to report? Will the staff then please present their reports? You can stay here if you want.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, again, as listed previously in a list of potential structures, thirty eighty five actually experienced a fire on September twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, which caused approximately a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars in damages. That particular property has been in an estate, which is my understanding as close but not totally settled at this point. However, the structure, we've had numerous complaints besides that on the ability for transients and/or children to get into the structure. It's not totally secured. We sent a letter out on February twelfth on this particular structure with similar dates, March twelfth to March eighth in this instance to obtain a permit, which was applied for and obtained prior to this date. And June first to complete repairs. While the building can potentially be secured by June first, I do not believe it possible to bring this structure back to full repair in that date. And again, this is a second step in a process. This process is here to ensure that the structure gets abated. And the second step, according to our ordinance, is to have council declared a dangerous structure, which brings the ability of the city to abate it should it not be abated. Again, the first step has been taken by an heir to the property order, Mr. James Montzabrotten, who lives in the room. And he'll, he can speak to his plans, but the process, this is the second step in the process, council hears testimony and decides whether or not this is a dangerous structure. Then has the ability after hearing testimony and receiving written testimony to adopt a resolution which specifies a timeframe to complete repairs on the structure and abate them.
All right, thank you. So I will now open the public testimony portion of the hearing. Written testimony has already been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and staff. There is a time limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of declaring the single family residence at three, zero, eight, five Sherman Avenue to be a dangerous structure? Okay, in favor of, okay, please come forward then. And if you could have a seat, there is a microphone here at the table. And again, we're asking for anyone to speak in favor. Once you begin speaking, our city recorder will go ahead and start the timer and let you know when it's time to wrap up. I think she'll, there'll be a bell.
Okay, I first met you over a year and a half ago when I spoke of this property because it was actually destroyed three months previously to me buying the property, walking the dogs, all the growth was grown over on the sidewalks. Everything, the gates were wide open, people were walking through there. I had actually walked through there. Yeah, there was no, no trespassing. Everything was in the home is still there. All the pianos, everything. Checks, this and that. And then I met a gentleman that stopped me about six months later. And he worked for the bank as a fire inspector. His name is Jerry Flowerdude. And he asked me if I had any knowledge of what happened, which I did not. Bill Caldwell lives on the corner, it's the McKay's president. He knew what was going on, so I turned him on to him. But here's the deal, after we had spoken, I think I spoke to some of the city planner and the fire captain as well, and they said that they were taking bids to have it raised. And since then, it's been, and I apologize that you missed your wife's birthday that evening. Anyhow, it's just, it's a real problem and for the police department as well. Some young kids pulled in, hooked up a big Ford Expedition, tried to pull it out with a small, smaller vehicle and drove them all the way down the street, smashing mailboxes and went all the way down. Luckily, there's no cars parked there because it's such a narrow drive coming up, which is Clark Street. And if that, several of the older people that lived down below me, they're all single seniors were sitting in their front yard, it would have been much worse. So it just draws problems. Plus, this gentleman here with the, working for the bank is the fire inspector, said that this should have been boarded up. He was told it should have been boarded up. There's this and that. There's been nothing done. There's mold in there. It stinks walking by. When I came in here and I think I mentioned to you how bad it was, we can't even walk the dogs on the sidewalk. Kids are going off on their bikes on the street. That has since been corrected and thank you very much for that. But it's still a blight. I have pictures of the beautiful homes around that. And I can't believe they're not here tonight, but I mean, that's all I just want to say. It's been going on for over a year and a half and I know everyone's hands are tied. My son's in demolition, I get it, but I just wanted to speak that out.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay. So let's see here then. Want to make sure that I'm not missing anything. So is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Right?
Yes. Good evening, members of the council and mayor. Hi, my name is James Montzabrotten. I live in Coos Bay, Oregon at two, eight, seven North Thirteenth Street. I'm going to try to speak fast because of the window and time here because I think this is somewhat of a complicated situation. So the, the bank had insurance on the, sort of control of the property up until last summer, until when they finally basically wrote off a mortgage and they sort of had the interest in the property as a lien holder. And they've basically got settled with insurance and washed their hands of it and then released the deed for the estate. And so our understanding as a family was that it was in the bank's obligation and position after the fire and up until that point. And so this last December, the estate was able to be filed because of trying to find a will. But my intention is, I applied for a permit is to repair the property, at least to secure it. About in the fall of this year, when we found out that the bank was no longer sort of responsible from our perspective of the property, I took a lock and secured the front gate with a chain and, and on a padlock, put no trespassing on there. In the past, I had tried to stop people from getting in the house. I actually took bolts and pieces of steel and put four, three, one, two, three, four, five, six of them on the door and they still kicked it in. But that was before the gate was locked. The gate is locked. It's now been burned. My intention is to secure the property further with putting in a front door, covering the windows and building a temporary roof. My objective is to buy the property from the estate and reconstruct it and salvage the property. It was the home I grew up in, my family. I was born there in nineteen sixty eight. My family lived there the whole time. And so I have a vested interest in that. I grew up in North Bend. I went to North Bend High School. I live here. In terms of my capacity to do that, I, in my home in Coos Bay with permits from the year two thousand to two thousand eight, I added on a separate structure to my house, a second story, permitted, inspected by the city. I did the, the framing, the drywall, the roofing, and then I expanded on, I've had permitting through the city to expand my house in Coos Bay by a thousand square feet. So I have some personal experience of being able to affect these measures. I'm not pipe draining. And so I would say that I have the experience and also the interest and have applied for the permit and I intend to secure this residence within the next sixty days. And then subsequent to that, submit to the city a proposed remodel or refurbishment of what's there. And it's my impression that there are aspects of the structure that can be salvaged. And I would like to, so to speak, rebuild the family home that I grew up in, that my family's had. And so I would ask the council to consider.
Not, you need to take a few more seconds.
I would really ask the city to consider allowing that structure to be rebuilt. And I understand the gentleman's concerns about the neighborhood and the prior instances. And my intention would be to completely alleviate those and to build the structure into a very pretty neighborhood house and not have it in its present condition. And it was only recently in the last several months that with the estate being filed that we're able to take these steps. It's my intention, as I said, to purchase it from the estate and become the owner and be fully responsible for all necessary steps to secure the property. Make sure the neighborhood appreciates it in the future as a, a nice house as, as the neighborhood would appreciate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will now close the public testimony portion. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter?
We declared this as dangerous and he actually continues on doing what he feels becomes, we just see redact that dangerous status.
That was my question as well, Mr. Denham. If, if, so Mr. Montzabrotten has some plans and I had heard you say earlier, like this is one of the steps to, to start the process. But if there were, if the nuisances were addressed or the things were cleaned up and that those sort of things or code violations addressed, how does that?
There's, there's two issues. One of it is securing the property, which is well, the gates and no trespassing signs help. That doesn't keep people from entering homes or properties exclusively, especially if they're appear to be vacant and attractive is what I will say is a nuisance. It's in, in that particular action. The second is the rebuilding time period. You have before you, if you declare it a dangerous building, thirty days to secure the building and the security itself is paramount. So somebody can't get hurt being on the property. Again, they're trespassing, but it has a history. Any, any of these structures that are vacant and left like that just are attractive in a sense that kids and vagrants tend to be attracted to them. And I can tell you, they even boarded up windows. They tear the boards right back off, that type of thing. We have several structures. We've had to weld the doors shut on the annex because we actually put steel bars across them. They unbolted them. So they're fairly robust at just nailing up a sheet of plywood or something over a window is typically not. But there's two parts to this. If you choose to declare it a dangerous structure, that does not prohibit you from giving extensions like any building permit. A building permit takes any, if Mr. Montzabrotten acquires a building permit without any other if he did no action in a hundred and eighty days, that building permit expires. So the time period that we're suggesting thirty days to secure and a hundred and eighty days to complete, he can always come back to the council if it's not complete in a hundred and eighty days. And I don't actually honestly expect him to be so, but without some reasonable time period to do so and what stipulating that, what we don't want to be is a hundred or you can say two years to complete. We don't want to be two years from now and nothing's done.
So you'll be work, so, so tonight if this body makes decided this is a dangerous structure, it's not the end of the road. You will be in communication with him on timing permits process.
He would, he would secure the structure, obtain a permit to rebuild the structure as long as he's progressing on that. You probably won't hear, the neighborhood will probably be happy. You won't hear much about it. If our concern is if you don't stipulate a timeframe and, and see zero progression, we don't want to be a hundred and seventy nine days down here and I, now I'm going to start work on the house unless they've been in contact with us.
Planatory what we need to do here.
Yeah.
I think we're all finding it pretty well.
Any other questions from the council? Okay. So let's, okay, one second here. So I just want to make sure that we are doing everything to follow the public hearing. And so I will go to councillor Nordoff and then councillor Schultz, did you also have your question? And then I do see that Mr. Montzabrotten had his hand up and hand up, but I think the public testimony portion is closed at this point, but I will confirm with our lawyer in a moment. So councillor Nordoff.
Is Mr. Montzabrotten able to work with the bank and get this resolved so that he can purchase it? I don't want him to be hamstrung by not being able to move forward because of the, you know, the ramifications of, of gaining, getting the property title from the bank and all that while the clock is ticking on our end.
I know we've got Ms. Cooper online right now. Is that an appropriate question for the councillor to ask?
Can you repeat them as Nordoff? I only caught the end of that. I'm sorry.
I'm just concerned that he, the fellow who grew up in the house and is interested in purchasing it. If, if the timeframe during which he is attempting to acquire title to the property, how that would affect his ability to do what we are requiring in terms of securing the property and applying for the building permit?
I believe at this time, and he can answer, I don't have a problem with having him answer. I believe he said the mortgage was satisfied and it's the estate that owns it now. There may be, and I'm definitely not legal advice when it comes to estates, there may be some issues in being able to do that in satisfying the estate. But I think the estate's the owner's free and clear at this point was my understanding.
I do want to ask Ms. Cooper because we have, you know, our task at hand that we're looking at is declaring this a dangerous property. I don't think we get in the weeds of things about the bank. Is that correct?
That's exactly right, mayor. Yeah. I mean, it's an interesting question, but I think staff can talk with, with the gentleman and just, and have a, you know, a process to make sure that you're apprised of what's going on. But you're right, the council shouldn't concern itself right now with who owns what and the, you know, the condition of the estate and everything like that.
Okay. And I have, I have closed the public testimony portion of the hearing and now we're at where the council's asking questions. I did see that Mr. Montzabrotten had another question. Is there, is that time passed in this hearing or is there another? Does he need to ask any questions at this point with our public works director once the hearing's closed?
Either way, mayor, you could open the public hearing again. I didn't, I think you did close it. I'm looking at my notes here, but it doesn't seem like there's anybody else waiting to talk. It's up to the council's discretion to, to be able to hear from the gentleman or otherwise, if he wants to just, if it seems like he can solve it with staff, that, that would be just fine too. It's up to you.
Thank you. Mr. Montzabrotten, would you like me to open up the public testimony portion for another two minutes?
I would greatly appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll go ahead and now reopen the public testimony portion so that Mr. Montzabrotten can have an additional two minutes to Okay, so we'll open the public testimony portion of the hearing to hear from Mr. Montzabrotten for an additional two minutes and then also from the other person that spoke for an additional two minutes.
Thank you very much. I greatly appreciate.
The city reporter for tracking that.
Thank you for the time. I appreciate your consideration. If the council would consider allowing this matter to be reviewed, I believe, I'm guessing it's about a month from now for the council has another meeting. Or is it monthly?
We meet twice a month.
Twice or the, or in thirty days, I believe I would be able to completely address the question of title and transfer the title from the state to myself and clarify that. And I may even be able to present counsel with the evidence and the neighbors that I've, that the property, with that thirty days, I anticipate I might be able to or likely would be able to secure the residence in terms of some of the items on the permit of boarding up windows, putting in a locked front door and some of those securing concerns as a preliminary matter to avoid it being declared a dangerous building. That way I could have the opportunity to to address the questions about title and ownership and then also prove to the city that these safety measures and making it more secure have been met. And so I'd ask the court to, I mean, the city council to allow that additional thirty days and perhaps retake this up in two meetings from now. And that would be my request and I greatly appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And so now we had the, our other speaker who is speaking in favor of declaring it a dangerous structure will give you an additional two minutes in public testimony.
Much more.
Name and address. Yeah, I'm sorry. What was your name and address?
Robert Lash. And I, my question is, what is secure? Because he put a little lock on the gate. It was the gate's this big. I'm five eight. I could step over it. So I don't understand how it was secure. And then this gentleman from the bank who's a fire investigator, he declared it a nuisance and it was dangerous because of all the mold and whatnot. And that was six months after it burned. Now it's been a year and six months. So what, what is secure? Is it boarding up all the windows and tearing off that roof and, or what is it? What is secure? Because kids go in there as well. It's a game. And all the neighbors I thought would be here aren't here. Obviously they forgot the date or whatnot. Every time I walk my dogs, which is twice a day, I hear from everybody. And the older person lives directly behind him. She's so old, she doesn't get out there. I've been over there and trimmed those bushes for her before. It's crawl over the fence. And my question was, why? Because I've worked with two estate programs before when I was an executor. If anyone has a problem with it, this can go on for years. That's my problem with this gentleman saying, oh, it takes thirty days. Nothing takes thirty days in getting the okay to take over the property. So that's my concern. And I said, I've only been here twice in the past year and a half. And believe me, it eats me up every day I pass that property. Because at least it can be done is go over there and just protect all the bushes and at least get rid of that. Other than there's, there's no remodeling that property. There's not. Other than there's, there's no remodeling that property. There's not one wall. I was a contractor in Southern California. There's not one wall left to build part. It needs to be completely raised and rebuilt. That's it. And and by the way, thank you for everybody. I love North Bay.
Yeah, all right, um I will go ahead now and reclose the public testimony portion of the hearing and I will go back into. Um, questions, uh Mister Dunham, it I I don't know for the council if the question was is. You know, what does securing it look like? Um, I don't know if, were you able to? Do you feel like that question was answered? Do you want Mister Madenam to speak to that? A little bit further about like what does secure look like? Is it a chain length fence all the way around the property? I guess I'm asking you, Mister Dunham. So, so, so two things. So that was the, there was a question like what is securing the property look like um? And to um when Mister Monsabrotta spoke again, um. And there's some things he wants to do, even tonight, if the council still um considers declares it a dangerous property. He still has an opportunity to do those things that he wants to do. We're not stifling any of that.
You have two things before you. One of them first is whether or not you want to declare it as a dangerous structure um. It appears to meet the criteria.
Yeah.
Um, beyond that, there's a resolution to adopt in adopting the resolution, the resolution itself. Gives thirty days. Uh, to secure. In a hundred and eighty days to bait the property in other way. It's still on, even when it's secured, if all the windows are closed up board, it's still an attractive nuisance in that. And I'm not saying not occupied, but in a structure that's not. Uh, it's boarded up. Looks like it's vacant, um totally looks obviously vacant. It's just an attractive nuisance at that point and it's still potentially a dangerous structure. Um, I can tell you the first one you had. Has been boarded up three or four times and we still get police calls there because. Uh, twenty-four nineteen and twenty-four fifty-one Broadway, they're just too easy to get into.
Okay.
So. That doesn't mean they can't secure it. It just means if they don't take the next step. And rehabilitate the structure or start rehabilitating the structure, still an attractive nuisance and potentially a dangerous structure. And its continuance. Um, there are other methods to secure, as somebody mentioned, fencing around it, uh completely around it. Uh, that type of thing and you may adopt different. And I would have to ask our city recorder if you don't adopt specifically the resolution, but I think you could change the dates and maybe our city attorney, you could change the timeframes. Within that resolution. To a longer period should you choose or a shorter period should you choose, but our ordinance says not less than ten days. I will give you that. We can't go less than ten days. I don't expect you to do that, but uh. You can choose to add additional dates to that, but first you have to evaluate it. Say, is it a dangerous structure or not? Then the resolution sets ti- timeframe for abatement. If that makes sense.
Okay, yes.
Thirty day time clock.
Right.
Even without ownership, you could secure the building. Okay, and it also starts the hundred and eighty days going. And if you're making progress during those hundred and eighty days, then we can ascend it. But I mean, we've got to do something that this is gonna be it.
Yeah, there, there, the surrounding community has, you know, the same weight. And a hundred and eighty days is enough time to get something started for sure. Although I appreciate you coming forward and talking about, I should be able to do this project. We hope you do this project.
Okay, so, all right, um. And just so the council knows, I think I'm aware that we have three of these public hearings before us. And we did the first one, which was two, four, one, nine. And. Now we're on, so basically did them, I'm.
Around twenty-four, um I moved to.
Well, hold on here for just a second because so. Let's all finish, let me finish the public hearing, because I was doing the public hearings back to back, but a little bit out of order on the council packet, I think. No, no, okay, all right, it's on order. So, so the, so, so nobody has any further questions for staff? Okay, I will now close now, um I will now, so then, yeah, we did all that then, right? Everything's done. And we, um, so I hear, so councillor Jones, I believe you had a first.
Um, I moved to approve of resolution three, three, four, six. Declaring the single family residence at three oh eight five Sherman Ave to be a dangerous structure.
Okay.
So, okay.
Heard a first from councillor Jones, the second from councillor Gaul. Any further questions?
So we're declaring it a dangerous structure and doing the resolution all in one instead of two steps? That's what the. Okay, I thought we had to do it two steps, but okay.
Um, and we do have Lori Cooper on 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 the line if she wants to chime in here that that we have the motion on the table. For the resolution three, three, four, six, declaring the property located at three zero eight five Sherman Avenue as a dangerous structure and authorize staff to move forward with the abatement.
Yes, I think that is fine, Mayor and Council. Um, I think the resolution declares it a dangerous building and then um gives the dates and everything. Um, you know, uh, the process. So, and I just want to assure you too that just because you put these deadlines in there. As you heard from Mister Dunham, it's a, you know, it's processed as long as the person who's intending to do things with it is in. Is in communication and getting permits and making progress. Um, that's, that's all fine and just because you get to a hundred AVAs doesn't mean everything, you know, the hammer comes down. There, there is some flexibility. But I think it's important that you adopt a resolution to get, get the process.
Thank you for reiterating that and I do think that's important and that makes me feel comfortable. Um, moving forward with the resolution that there is still an opportunity to for you to continue to work with um public works, but. Um, we will go ahead and we had a first, we had a second, we've had a discussion. All in favor of resolution three, three, four, six, declaring the property located at three zero eight five Sherman Avenue, a dangerous structure and authorize staff to move forward with abatement, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, all right. So then we have. Number nine, which is the public hearing for me. So let me just make sure I'm getting all these notes crossed out. All right, so. Public hearing to evaluate eighteen seventy-eight need related to being a dangerous struc- structure, resolution three, three, four, seven. This is the time set for a public hearing to evaluate eighteen seventy-eight need related to being a dangerous structure. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Are there any conflicts of interest or ex parte conversations that the councillors um need to report? Hearing and seeing none, uh we will now ask the um staff to please present their reports.
Again, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. This is the third or the fourth structure tonight, the third ownership um. That we are proposing to address. Eighteen seventy-eight need was occupied uh by two elderly residents. Uh, we were originally called to this residence on a welfare check. And Becky Rec, who was the the owner of the property. Was removed to the hospital at that time and has not been occupied since. And forgive me, I think that was in twenty twenty-one. I don't have it right in front of me. It was in the council report packet. Since that time, this structure's been. Not only at that point when we were called on the welfare check, the porch, front porch is collapsing. Um, the back door was that was secured and there's collapse in the basement. Some other issues, we secured that structure, the city itself because absentee ownership. Um. And both owners to our knowledge have passed away at this point. Um, we, the city itself has secured that structure three times that I'm aware of at least three times. Uh. Again. Ideally that we had processed this along quicker, but we're at that point now, so I don't know if there's a lot more to explain about that. It continues. To be an attractive nuisance to vagrants is the primary issue. And there's the structure that front porch is falling in as well as part of the basement at this point.
Okay, thank you. I will now open the public testimony portion of the public hearing. Written testimony has been entered into the record and provided to members of the council and the staff. There is a um, there is a time limit of three minutes per speaker and each speaker must state their name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of declaring the public building at eighteen seventy-eight made a dangerous structure? Okay, is there anybody wishing to speak in opposition? No opposition. Okay, I will now close the public testimony portion of the hearing. Do any members of the council have any additional questions about this matter for staff? Hearing and seeing none, if there's no further discussion, I will now close the public hearing at this time. I will now entertain a motion.
I move to approve of resolution three, three, four, seven, declaring the building located at eighteen seventy-eight money as a dangerous structure.
Okay.
First from uh councillor Jones, a second from councillor Gaul. Any questions from um uh the council or any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor of approving resolution three, three, four, seven, declaring the property located at eighteen seventy-eight need as a dangerous structure and authorize. Staff to move forward with abatement, please say aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. All right, Miss City Recorder, was there any additional items that we need to take care of with those resolutions? All right, then that would take us to number eleven, which is our community grant applications. We had some discussion last night in the council um about where these would go to and I'm looking for a motion from the council right now. And after there's motion, then we can have a discussion.
I move to award community grants only six thousand four hundred dollars.
I heard a first from councillor Schultz. A second from councillor Gaul. Is there any discussion?
Uh, so I just had a question and it's, it's about this. Little bucket of money. It's not about this year's bucket of money, but it's about. Um, I'm uh wondering if we, if appropriate for us to have some kind of. Uglyment as a council going forward to um continue using. The shared revenue as a fund for the Jubilee. Um.
I don't know if that's the time we've done because.
Yeah, so.
We have to get it on the budget if we want to do it and if that's gone.
Counsel.
So, um. I, let me address this.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, so I'm gonna ask the finance director to kind of refresh our memory, the process of this. Because I feel like we hear about the community grants several times a year where you can, when you accept the money and then you talk about it during budget season and then we have an application process. And I appreciate councillor Jones bringing this up um because uh it is, I think. No decision would be made about it, but I like the idea that we're talking and thinking about what this would look like for the future. Um, especially since the July Jubilee, which is Northland's birthday as a reminder of celebrating our town. Um, will uh would be an appropriate place that we would consider at a later point to use this. And so I'm glad that we're thinking about that now.
Yeah, so um I appreciate the question too. Um, during the budget committee meetings, um that's when the. Um, resolution to accept the state revenue shared uh revenue is made. Um, and then it's um at that time during the budget when you'd want to talk about what to allocate. Um, or what to appropriate for spending on, um it could be community grants and or it could be July Jubilee as well. That's when that appropriation has to be made and then it gets adopted at that point, that state shared revenue then. Um, like you did this year, you committed a portion of that um towards community grants.
Right.
Um, and.
Yeah, I was just concerned because if we know we want to do July Jubilee next year, but we don't have a funding source, that's a disconnect.
Yeah.
Budget.
Okay, and I'm, I'm, I'm another point, I'm glad that you had brought this up because it made me start thinking about, because there's work that has to be done. In one part of the fiscal year and then the other part of the fiscal year too. Um, so it's good, even though we're not making any decision about this, it's good to think about this right now.
But we previously had said we'd split the money and this grant would go towards grants for people that needed it specifically in our community.
For this year.
But that's what I'm motioning for, not, I'm not.
Yeah. But yeah, but good reminder on how. More sooner than later, we're going to be talking about this again. We'll think, I think we just talked about this and we'll be talking about this again and we can make the decision at that time. Is this something that we want to earmark for our town celebration or divided up different ways that we've done in the past? So. Thank you again for the clarification. So we did have a first and a second. We've had um. We had a first, we had a second, we're having discussion. Um, and then. All in favor of um.
Do we need to do the mo- motion for the proportioning of three hundred and sixty-one hundred?
Cause it just says sixty-four hundred.
It says sixty-four. The recommendation is to award the both applications, one application um at the full amount. Um, for Coos County Friends of Public Health for three hundred dollars and Southwestern Oregon Veterans Outreach. Um, the balance of the sixty-one hundred.
Yeah.
Which totals to the sixty-four.
That's the recommendation.
That's the.
The recommendations as award of community grants totaling, so to gather those grants total out.
Yeah, we didn't split them up into the specific.
Correct.
So we had a first, we had a first, we had a second, we had our discussion, all in favor that the city can award the six thousand four hundred um. Total grants for community grants um under the recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you. And hopefully that answered your question, councillor Jones. Then the next item is number twelve. Is there a motion from the council on the authorization authorization to purchase the replacement?
I'll, I'll make a motion that the city council authorize staff. Lower block from Aspen in the amount of ten thousand six hundred dollars.
Okay, first from councillor Hamilton, second from councillor Garboden, um any uh question or any discussion? All in favor for the city to authorize the staff to purchase a replacement lower block from, uh, how do you say that, Asco? Um, in the amount of ten thousand six hundred, including shipping, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item is the Northland Public Library renovation. Is there a motion from the council?
I move that the city council accept the fee proposed from Robertson Sherwood Architects and approve the allotted funds for the library. Restoration project um consisting of two hundred thousand dollars from the Urban Renewal Agency. And a hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the library fund totaling. That number eight.
That's a lot. First, councillor Schultz.
Second.
Second from, was that councillor Durbin? Okay, um, any discussion? All in favor um that the city council accept a fee proposal for Robertson Sherwood Architects and approve the allocation funds for the library restoration project. Consisting of ten thousand, no, a hundred thousand dollars from the Urban Renewal Agency and a hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars from the library fund. Totaling two hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Hey. Um, and so that would take us to number fourteen, which is. An action, if any, resulting in the executive session. So I am looking for a motion from the council to approve me to sign the city administrator's evaluation. And we could keep, I think it's, that's, I'm gonna see if I have any other specific wording, but basically um. You know, the the motion could say something like um.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign the city administrators.
That would be, yes, if you would like to make that. Yeah, I heard a first from councillor Jones that I she, I believe you were saying to move, Schultz, sorry. Uh, I heard a first saying that you would move to authorize the mayor and council. President to sign the performance evaluation.
Yep.
I heard that. And I heard a second from councillor Hamilton, first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor then of that authorization for the mayor and the council president to sign the performance evaluation. Um, as discussed in the executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, we had our city administrators report given to us. In electronics, I don't, was there anything else that you wanted to?
It's, it's issued and it is posted.
Would you like to give a finance director's report at this time?
Probably not tonight.
I mean, I just, I'm a fan of finance and I'm giving you the opportunity. So, all right, then we'll go ahead and um go on to committee reports. I know that um the special events committee hasn't met since the last time we've um been together. We do have a meeting coming up next week. Um, I have been in touch with just some of the people that are running the signature events um and getting updates. If, or if there is any updates and there's nothing really big to update at this point. The um, our Stephanie Wilson um has been working with the, her part-time staff. And is going to be using the money that we did allocate from. A rat hole, the five thousand dollars, uh I think that person is gonna start flexing up uh their hours to start kind of. Our rat hole, the five thousand dollars. I think that person is going to start flexing up their hours to start kind of closing the loop on some of the groundwork that we have done. I'm really excited to hear what the mall has planned. They really are going big with their family events. And then once. I, I'm actually having a meeting with Stephanie and the part-time employee next week before the meeting. So we'll be able to kind of then start using that staff to kind of roll out like the logo contest and hopefully move forward with the Jubilee ambassadors program. Kind of formerly known as the July Jubilee princesses. So I think we've got all the, all the items in place.
Man, Larry, you're the cake committee.
You guys are on the cake committee, so. Yeah. Yeah, okay, we, we've got that written down somewhere. So that's really all I had with the special events committee. And I will go ahead then and move on to council comments. Councillor Jones, let's start with you down there.
So I just want to give a shout out to the part of staff. For the clean public bathrooms and the beautiful press that we have. I stroll around town all the time and. But my shout out to the fire department and the grant writing to get the understoren cleared out. It looks beautiful. It's gonna fill in beautifully. That's what I got.
Okay, great.
The only I got is I noticed, I don't know why, but I've been around the ambulances a lot lately, fired through town. And I've noticed that people don't like stop and get off the road. I, I don't get that much. I watch the guy pull out, call the ambulance. It's crazy, so. Be aware of your surroundings and what's going on.
Nothing from councillor Garboden? Not a friendly reminder that your taxes are due in two weeks?
No, I don't.
Councillor Goll.
Oh, I gotta, I gotta give a shout out to Brownie and that's far from it. I was, I had a shift working all weekend, but I was. The first paid customer at the Pancake. And Ralph and I did a great job cooking pancakes and stuff. That's my positive. My negative is I wasn't very tickled with staff's feeling on the longevity of the pool yesterday. And that pool was on the budget a long time ago. And I don't know why it can't be from, to a certain extent from here on out. So that's all I got.
Okay, councillor Schultz.
Um, I have no comment at this time, okay?
Councillor Nordoff?
Congratulations to Haley and the library. Board on getting all the grants that came in to support the work that's being done. It's really good news.
Okay. All right, well, I was not here at the last council meeting, but I did watch councillor president does, runs a very efficient meeting. I saw how long it was. Yeah, he was very, he was very good at it. I was at the National League of Oregon Cities, so one of the boards that I sit on is the League of Oregon Cities. I'm the vice president. Of that board, following in councillor Slater's footsteps, where he's done that for years. And what's neat is when you're on the board of the League of Oregon Cities, then through their budget, you are invited and their money. Paid to be able to, or not paid to, but you're, you're on a scholarship to be able to attend these. So it was at no cost to the taxpayers of North Ben. To be able to travel to Washington DC. We were able to hear the president speak and we are also able to hear the Secretary of Transportation speak. Sure, he's very busy today, by the way. Very, my condolences go out to that community who had the bridge accident. I was thinking about that and I, you know, you really could see like the Oregonians, there's, you know, people representative from all over. The United States, but you knew where the Oregonians were. And we were on the edge of our seats listening to everything that each one of those people spoke to. Including when they were talking about the mega grant that Portland got to help build their bridge. And one of the things that the League of Oregon Cities does, and you may remember this, is we get a list of. Priorities that each council able to whittle down and then, and then say, these are the things that are important to our, our community. So like. I don't remember exactly what they were off the top of our head, but they're probably the ones that ended up on the big list. But things that we want. Our League of Oregon Cities to lobby for at the state and federal level. And so, for example, the things that made the list were major one, ten and some others. So we take that list, we put in our thoughts. It goes to the league and then it's compiled and it's whittled down into usually like five or six major priorities that our lobbyists. Lobby for. So here's just a recap and thank you for letting me take a little bit extra time, but I want to be able to report out on this really good work. It was very good. These are top five legislative wins for the cities in twenty twenty four. The top of the list was major one, ten. League of Oregon Cities leadership contributed to restored accountability of major one, ten and funding for addiction treatment. There was also, number two was recreational immunity. Trials can be reopened and cities' ability to provide recreational opportunities without fear of liability is now restored. These would have had huge impacts on, especially the coastal towns. I'm also part of an Oregon's Coastal Caucus that looks at things that specifically affect our communities. And we had written a letter to all of our representatives saying, please make sure that this recreational immunity is restored. Could be devastating for the tourism industry. Also, housing infrastructure, the League of Oregon Cities secured sixty five million dollars for shelter gap funding. And a hundred million dollars for local government housing infrastructure. North Ben is part of this. You know, we're really happy that this four million dollars. Out of appropriations is coming in to make, help. You know, which is one of our council goals is to get that annexed or down and to do a, a workforce housing project there. So also other two items that were on big wins for the League of Oregon Cities was lobbying for urban, urban growth boundaries, as we talk about like what can we do with housing? The legal cities protected local decision-making, very important, local decision-making authority against frivolous land use appeals. And then also photo radar. All cities have access to a proven community safety technology photo speed radar. So that was a big item that they're lobbying for. You can find more of this information, anybody, this is open to the. Public can go to the League of Oregon Cities, see what kind of work that we do. And they're actually even putting out like, this is sort of a snapshot of, of some of the big wins and they're going to be putting out some more detailed reports. So I appreciate being voted in as vice president to the league because. You are part of a group that represents all of Oregon. And there's a very large number of those cities, two hundred and forty one cities, about eighty percent of them are around our size. You know, and so sometimes you go to these meetings and you think you hear Portland and you hear Hillsborough and the things that they're trying to, to deal with, and there's that, right? Metropolitan cities have different types of issues, but whenever I can meet with our senators, our congressional leaders is, and even when we had a meeting with Governor Tina Kotek. Last summer, we said, listen. We, and we might only be ten thousand people, but we are still facing the same issues and it even feels bigger to us because we have less resources. So maybe our housing crisis looks different than what Hillsborough is going through. And maybe our homeless population isn't a big tent city like Portland has, but it is impacting all of our lives. And so it's being able to really be the voice, and this is why I put myself out there to run for the VP is I want to make sure that the rural Oregon cities are being heard. So. It's, it's an opportunity that I, I take very seriously and even when the, you get to go to the Capitol, you get to visit with Merkley and Wyden. And we have our, you know, our priorities that we've agreed on as a league that we're lobbying for. But also I asked, because I feel like this, you know, you gotta be the squeaky wheel sometimes. As Senator Wyden was leaving, I asked, can I walk him out and just get one more plug in for how do we use our core to the best of its ability? And make sure that we are, you know, using our natural resources here, what has kept our community going for many years. So I got to lobby for the, the regular things that are on the list. And then also, you know, as we're going out, I'm like, by the way, Coos Bay, North Ben, you know, just one more time. I was actually even able to spend a little bit more time with Val Hoyle, and I said, hey, thanks for the four million dollars. Now I need two and a half million dollars for the community center. So what's important about this too is you have five congresspeople working for us in Washington for Oregon. They don't all do that. They, there are some of those elected congressmen. A specific congressman that does not advocate for federal dollars. And in my opinion, we're all paying federal taxes. This money is going up. Let's get back some of it here to the coast. And how you do that is you show up these meetings, you make sure North Ben is heard, you make sure our whole community, hey, I'm talking about rural Oregon, hey, I'm on the coast. Hey, here's the issues that our community, the things that we face on the coast that nobody else faces, or what a population of under ten thousand faces because of the lack of funding that we get. So I will continue to serve on that board and do everything that I can to make sure everybody knows where North Ben Coos Bay and the port of Coos Bay is and advocate for these things. So. That was my trip. It was really good and it was very successful. Now, I also just want to say, you know, here we are, it's March of twenty twenty four. Rewind the clock back to when we initially made our strategic priorities and goals for twenty three, twenty five. Something that the council might think about is it, we might want to schedule a council meeting to kind of take, you know. A little refresh of where we're at with the goals because we have things on here like number one, determine additional, this is, we, we, we wrote them all out. We said things that were all important to us, and then we put them into tiers. Tier one was determine additional long-term funding for the city. And I wonder if our finance director would be able to just have it off the top of our head, your head on where we're currently sitting with how many grants that we've got. Say like this fiscal year, do you know?
Terms of number.
Yeah.
Oh. It's at least a dozen.
Okay. We, you have it handy. This is.
I have the one twenty one version.
Okay. You can, we can just do a rough number, but I want to make.
Twenty one version and in fiscal year twenty three.
Yes.
We've got over five million and in fiscal year twenty four, we have about four million.
So far, so far. So this is so important when we have these issues like with our property taxes being capped at three percent. If we want to do all these things that we, for the city. Going after this long, you know, this additional long-term funding for the city and I just, I can't applaud our, our staff and our city administrator enough. Because I feel like this is, we're just on a roll and this is unprecedented. Like, just, I, thank you, thank you. Because all the department heads, people ask, they're like, wow, who's your grant writer? And I'm like, well, there's several of them, you know, it's all the department heads that are doing this work and the city administrator. You know, the tier two had other things in here about, you know, creating a pocket park at Sherman, creating a defensible space and clearing the basives in the city parks. That was tier two. And the reason why I wanted, I'm highlighting this and I want to also highlight three and four, which was, you know, things like creating a youth advisory council. I think there's an opportunity to do this as we reinvent the July Jubilee and we look at how do we, how do we bring? How do we take that, the Jubilee Princess program that we used to have and build onto it? And that was on the third tier. But, you know, then you look at fourth tier and we've got these other things that are always, you know, not necessarily going to be the top priority, but doesn't mean that it's not important, which is July Jubilee. Maybe looking at a succession planning and cross-training the staff. And then also on here, why I think we should take a look at this is complete this Coos County Annex Workforce Housing Project. That was for, we've got some things maybe now that we need to take another look at closer. And to Goll's point, develop a, I just had it here, it said pool. Where did it go? Develop a strategic longevity plan to keep the pool operational. Okay, so these were our goals for twenty three, twenty five. So it might be a good idea to really have a work session soon where we address some of those. We have this, we have a ticking time clock where the levy is going to run out on the pool. And it sounds like what we're hearing here from council is we want to, want to make sure how do we keep that running? So. It takes a lot of work to make those happen. And so I just want to say that, you know, what's that?
So he's done in November.
So if councillor Goll's done in November.
Wait till you hear me then.
Yeah, right. So we are making really great progress and have done some amazing things, but we still have a lot of work to do, especially apparently before this guy goes, right? We got a ticking, we got a ticking time clock on you as well.
Let me get a good cake out of me.
Yeah. So, those are my council comments. It's great. Lots of great things going on. We've just got to keep moving forward. Any other business? No other business. All right, well, with that meaning, with that being said, meeting's adjourned.
I would have never guessed you to pull eight.